It's not very functional. All those in favor of the agenda, please indicate by state legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first and really only agenda item is the discussion and presentation of the Lakeside Aquatics Park. We've got the aquatics committee here with us. The stage is set up in a way that we're making it do, but after the presentation, they'll join us on the stage for the discussion. But at this point in time, we'll just go through the presentation that the city's prepared and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Briefly to go over the timeline, in 2018, the city designated $200,000 for a splash pad. The intention was for that splash pad to be built right next to the community center, the grassy area between the community center and the new Sixth Street Park. We began having more discussions about that in the summer of 2020. That's when we were, that's when the funds were actually budgeted to be spent. So we were looking for a design so that we'd be able to purchase the equipment and hopefully get that constructed in 2021. However, when the city began discussing it in the summer of 2020, there were several residents that were opposed stating that a splash pad was not enough, that a splash pad really only appealed to smaller children and that it wouldn't be large enough to really be a draw for families as well as tourists and different things like that. So in September of 2020, the city council advertised for an ad hoc committee to be created that would be able to study outdoor aquatics and come up with a recommendation. It did this by including it on the front page of the September SIP. It was the lead story. Also, there were two Facebook posts. Each Facebook post had more than 5,000 or 4,500 different views and there were a lot of comments and likes from that. There was also discussion held on KBHB and it was also on the city's website. So there was a lot of efforts to try to get as many people as possible to be on the committee. Every single person who applied was placed on the committee and those that have participated for a little over a year now, I think, are here in the audience today and will be coming up on stage. Once the committee formed in October, they started looking at a lot of different ideas. The first idea was to build an outdoor splash pad with a zero entry pool. And that would be built right next to the community center. And that was going to be about a $2.2 million pool. And that was the cost estimate pre-pandemic. We also know, of course, that prices have increased since then. The picture here looks like a similar pool. I think this is Lemon's Pool. That's a similar pool facility that they were looking at possibly building. And again, that was going to be a $2.2 million pool. Other South Dakota communities, once they build a pool like this, it requires an ongoing subsidy of $30,000 to $75,000 to maintain that. So in other words, the gate entrance fees are not enough to cover the annual costs of that. So with that, the committee really thought about what the original ideas were, which is to make sure it's appealing to a wide range of individuals, families as well as tourists. And looking at that and saying that it probably doesn't necessarily make sense plus $2.2 million is a very significant investment on behalf of the city. So then the second idea was to build a larger regional outdoor aquatic center. The price tag on that was easily $12 million plus and it really depended on the types of activities that were included. And so $12 million was really kind of the starting point figure. That could fit in the grassy area right next to the community center, but they also looked at a couple other locations as well. And other communities that have this require an annual subsidy of more than $100,000. So again, the gate does not cover the ongoing operational costs of the facility. But the idea of that is that it would compete with spearfish. It would make it easier to attract tournaments for other regional sports throughout the summertime. That was something that the committee heard a lot of when they spoke with other sports organizations, the hotel bid board, other entities like that, that were saying if you're going to build something, make sure it's something that draws and attracts people to the community and makes it easier for people to host tournaments here because there's other activities for kids who are not necessarily playing. Kind of the younger kids of the family or some of the older kids of the family that get dragged along because their brother or sister happened to be in a tournament, there's something for them to do. But looking at that, I think the committee said $12 million plus again really is not feasible. That would be something that would take a tremendous amount of the city's capital improvement fund for the next 20 years. And so that wasn't really a responsible thing to do. So the committee proceeded with coming up with a new and different innovative idea that is something that has been done in Wisconsin and Michigan and Tennessee and other states, but not necessarily in South Dakota or the Black Hills. So their idea of a manmade lake was presented to the public during two public town hall presentations. And then they made their final recommendation to the city council on May 3rd of last year. The city council then used a portion of the splash pad funding to get that $200,000, used a portion of that to hire a consultant to review the committee's proposal, to answer several questions, to provide an operational cost as well as a construction cost and also three preliminary plans at the fairgrounds. And the reason the fairgrounds is that was the committee's recommended location. And the reason for that is because the fairgrounds is currently owned by the city and it's, would not require additional land to be purchased. And so there would be a budget, budgetary savings with that. The consultants then began to do their work. They met with the infrastructure committee, the legal and finance committee, the parks board, the municipal utilities board and the outdoor aquatics committee. Those meetings resulted in several questions that needed to be answered. And so the consultants provided those answers. Also, the consultants held a two-day charrette here at the community center to get additional public input. And from that, the consultants kind of reworked their three conceptual plans. And I think that's important to note that the three plans that were included in their report, that 140-page book, I think, those were modified from the committee's original recommendation. And that was modified because of the input that the consultants heard during the charrettes. Some of those changes included upgrades to the ball fields. So you can see in two of them, there's a million dollar upgrade for lighting at the ball fields. And the third one, it's actually brand-new ball fields. Larger whippets or the obstacle courses. And also inclusion of a splash pad in miniature golf was really a necessity that came up from that. So the first question that came from several of the committees was the long-term water quality and ensuring that long-term the water would be clear and safe for individuals. And so looking again at other communities that have this sort of facility and the consultants who, a portion of them have actually designed these, in their book on pages 48 and 49, they specifically addressed that question. But essentially, the lake is designed so that there's no runoff that enters the lake. So it's more of a pure system. You don't have to worry about fertilizer or other materials that actually end up eroding into the lake. And also there are slopes and depths of the shoreline composition. So it's designed to ensure that there's long-term water quality. There's also frequent water testing and surveys to identify and also make changes that are necessary before those, before those issues become larger deals. Also, that's something that occasionally, every several years, the lake is drained so that new water can be put in so that it can be clean. That's the same thing that we do at the pool. That's the same thing people do at every, you know, aquatic facility. Question two, bird and aquatic life management. That's handled on pages 49 and 50. Number one is nutrient mitigation. Again, making sure that there's not runoff that enters the lake. That minimizes the sort of organic nutrients that go into natural lakes. And that's where there's a lot of aquatic life and bird life that go into there because there's a lot of nutrients. If you ensure that there's no erosion into the lake, you minimize the vast majority of that. Also, you do aeration throughout the entire facility. There's park side herbicides and algae sites that you can end up using if there does become a problem. And also there's significant mowing practices to make sure that there's not nesting areas next to the lake so that it doesn't become that sort of habitat. In addition, there are different things that you can do to disrupt night loading of migratory birds that can be there. So those are all things that can be incorporated in the actual construction, design and construction of the lake. Question three on safety recommendations. This is on pages 54 and 58 of the book. It's an intentional design to enhance safety. And again, this is, I think it's important to note that there are several of these facilities around. This is not the first time it's been done. So they're able to look at best practices and lake after lake after lake and then imitate those in the design. And so you have shoreline depth so that there's not a 12-inch ledge immediately next to the shoreline. So if someone were to happen to fall into the lake or something, you fall into the lake and it's a foot deep. It's not necessarily a problem. And also you ensure that where there is more activity, it is deeper so that it minimizes potential danger. And also there's significant standard operating procedures for all the different roles and situations that can occur at the lake. A portion of that was included in the book, but there's far more detailed SOPs that we can receive from the consultants as well. But essentially, it's been designed or it would be designed so that it would operate based on the best practices of all the other facilities that have been in operation for several years around the, around the nation. Next one is on leak detection. This is on pages 52 and 53. Number one, systems can be designed to be integrated during the construction of the lake so that you can start identifying when there are leaks. When there are leaks, then they can be fixed and definitely during, when the lake is drained, they can be fixed as well. But I think it's also important to note that that's only necessary to reduce leakage of clean water. A lot of times when people hear leak detection of manmade lakes, those are for holding ponds that sometimes store polluted water from mines or different things like that or for sewer water. Of course, there still is leak detection that can occur. The next one is on floodway implications. All of the potential sites that are included in here are not actually in the floodway or floodplain. And so they would not actually have any additional implication into the floodway. The floodway and floodplains would not be expanded because of this. In addition, all, any of the potential sites would not actually have a dam. And there's also no waterway that would naturally flow into or out of the lake. So there's nothing that could be breached. When you think of significant flooding issues, that's usually when there's more water in a upstream kind of watershed. There's more water than what's customarily occurs and so it expands beyond the typical floodplain. This is not changing the watershed at all. So there's not going to be additional water that flows through any neighborhood or a part of the community. In addition, there's not a dam that's holding the water. It's literally kind of digging a hole in an area. So there's not a dam that would be at risk of actually rupturing or being breached and causing a significant flood. Next one is on inclement weather protocols. That's on page 56. That's also part of the design implications or the design of these lakes so that when there are high winds that are predicted, that are sustained, then at that point, there are safety precautions that go in and some of the equipment is taken down so that it's ready for it. If there's something that is sudden, then the area can be, can be evacuated just like at the pool and just like at soccer fields and everywhere else, it would be the exact same scenario. There would be some additional equipment that would need to be put away, but it is manageable and it's something that's done throughout the nation. Question seven on water usage. That is on page 51. During dry years, and I think that's important to bring up, that there are some years where actually it's anticipated that the average amount of rainfall would almost maintain the lake at its, at its basic level. However, during dry years, a three-acre lake could require up to 1.9 million gallons of water during the peak, during the peak eight weeks of temperature. And so that does seem like a lot of water and it is a lot. However, I think it's important that you would actually place that in perspective. During the same eight-week high temperature, you can look at a single-family residence that's on a 12,000 square foot lot. It can consume 127,000 gallons of water. So if you multiply that out, that means that during the same eight-week period, the lake would use about as much water as what 15 homes do. And so there is water usage and there's water consumption during dry years, but it's not a significant or massive amount of water. And with that being said, it's also optional. And so if during a peak time period, there were two inches of evaporation and if only one inch of water were to be refilled into the lake over a one-day time period, then the overall level of the lake would decline by one inch. That doesn't mean it's not functional anymore. It just means it would take a little additional time for it to go back up to its status quo level. Also, we were able to look at the city park usage. And this is just for some of the green space around our shelter. This is not the football field, it's not the soccer fields. During the same eight weeks of peak temperatures, it consumes 316,000 gallons. So again, parks and recreational areas do absolutely consume water. In addition, the fairground site, if that were to be chosen, the fairground site does have an existing well and it does draw from a different aquifer than what the municipal wells draw from. So this would not be reducing the municipal well aquifer. With that being said, I've also heard some questions about isn't that well non-potable? It's non-potable because it's not chlorinated. That's something that could be changed. And so you could easily add a chlorinator with that and then it would become potable water. But with that being said, it's not intended to place chlorinated water into the lake. And so that well would not be changed to make it potable. But when someone says it's not potable, that doesn't mean it's, it's dirty water. It just means it's not chlorinated. Looking at the construction cost estimate for the infrastructure costs, and this is for a lake or the Lakeside Adventure Park at the fairgrounds. It's, the consultants anticipated about $705,000. That's more basic grading work as well as some upgrades to the existing well that is there as well as some demolition costs, different things like that. Also, the general contingencies for the contractor. Then for the lake, the park and the equipment, it's about $4.6 million. Now, this is the average of the three designs. Based off of which design, some of the costs go up slightly, some of them go down slightly, but it's a very minimal change. They're pretty much the same. Then there was a resident's request from several of the people that participated in the charrettes to add additional ball field lighting. And so for two of the scenarios, there's an additional $1 million in construction costs and that adds additional lighting at the softball fields and at the baseball fields. And then in the third scenario, there was a request for new ball fields instead of just adding lights. The cost of the new ball fields was about $9.25 million. So that $9.25 million includes the $1 million for lighting because essentially when you build right new ball fields, they would have the new lights there. And so the three options at the fairgrounds all include either $1 million for new lights or $9.2 million for new ball fields. The operating costs, the consultants prepared a conservative, likely an optimistic cash flow scenario. And that was based on the similar facilities that are located in smaller communities, not in the state because the state doesn't have a facility like this, but in Michigan, Wisconsin, Indiana. Even in the conservative scenarios, there was an end-of-year profit of $35,000. If the council does select that they would like to proceed with planning the project, there would need to be further investigation to ensure that all of the revenue streams, including miniature golf, are included. That's something that is not included in, in any of the revenue streams that the consultants put in. Also, there's a lot of discussion about different revenue models, including resident season passes, different things like that that should be included, that were not. But those are the sorts of things that will require additional research that really before doing that, I think it's up to the council to say, is this an idea that's still worth proceeding with? So looking at the first one, this was the ball fields concept at the fairground site. Again, the infrastructure, about $700,000 to build the lakefront adventure park, $4.6 million. Then the new ball fields, which includes softball fields and baseball fields, $9.25 million. This also includes selling two existing baseball fields to the school district. That has been a request of the school district that they would like to have additional land to expand. And so this does set aside two existing ball fields that would be sold to the school district so they could get the land that they were asking. That leaves about, I believe it's two acres of land where there could be some additional housing that would be constructed. That would likely need to be something that would be a multifamily housing. If you look at the revenue that would come from the land sale, both to the school as well as to the housing and then the TIF proceeds, and so the future tax revenue that would come in from that housing development, that would generate about $680,000. The committee has, has committed that in any of these scenarios, they would be willing to try to fundraise $350,000. They've already raised more than $100,000 worth and we know that there's additional interest from that. But when you look at those revenue sources compared to the cost, there would be still a need for $13.1 million to proceed with the ball fields concept. The next concept was the loop. And so this kind of has, the adventure park is kind of the centerpiece of a neighborhood. There's small commercial areas, so maybe a small restaurant or something like that that would be at the, at the sides of it. And then housing that would go, go along the backside. Again, the cost of the infrastructure, about $700,000. The lakefront park is about $4.6 million. Then the ball field lights, and that's not shown on here, but again substantial improvements in the softball in the future. And so that TIF proceeds would be about $2.1 million. There's also additional land that would be sold. And so that's about $585,000 that would be available for that. And then fundraising, again, the $350,000. That leaves a gap of about $3.3 million. Now, when you look at this, the governor's budget includes some additional assistance, quite a lot of additional assistance for developments for the next kind of two years. This is the sort of project that would apply for that or that would fit those recommendations. And so it's possible that we could look at some state grants to cover a portion of that. We don't know how much yet and we don't know that until the, the final budget's actually adopted by the state and we find out what the grant requirements are. But some of that $3.3 million probably could be covered by some grants that are unique that will be available kind of for the first time for about the next 24 months or so. Then the third option at the fairgrounds, the consultants called the split. Here, again, infrastructure, the lake park and the ball field lights, costs are roughly the same. To be fully transparent, if you read through the book, the costs actually, I think, in this are about $200,000 or less. So this would be slightly less expensive. The TIF proceeds are slightly higher because there's a little additional property for housing. The land sale proceeds again are a little bit higher. And so that plus the fundraising reduces the city's support. And so this one instead of $3.3 would be roughly about $3 million. And again, there probably would be some grants that would be available from the state to help cover a portion of that, but definitely not all of it. And so I don't think you should proceed with this anticipating that we'd be able to receive $3 million in grants. But hopefully there would be some funding for that. Then we did look at two other alternate sites for properties that are for sale. One is the Richards property, which this is directly east of the Scott Peterson Motors. If you look at the infrastructure costs there, the infrastructure costs are lower because there's not the demolition work that would need to be done and some of the grading work that would need to be done. We have had a developer look at this and sketch out kind of the number of homes as well as some commercial areas that would be possible here so we could look at what the TIF cash flow would be from here. The lake park, again, we're anticipating being about $4.6 million. The consultant said that kind of wherever you place it, the lake cost will be fairly similar. Not exactly, it'll probably be plus or minus about 10% or so, but it's going to be a fairly similar cost. In this scenario, we would need a new well though, because there's not an existing well at that location. We would need a new well if we would want to draw the water from a different aquifer than what our current municipal well system is. And again, that would make it the same as what the site is at the fairgrounds.
Could you repeat that about the well?
Okay, so this site is immediately adjacent to the municipal's water system. But if we hooked it up to that, we would be drawing from the same aquifer, which there has been some concern from residents not wanting it to draw from the same aquifer. That is an option. But if you wanted it to go from a different aquifer, which is the same situation that we have at the fairgrounds, then you'd have to drill a new well, have the pump and the pump house and everything else. It's roughly $1 million.
To be clear, will the well at the fairgrounds, that, that's already about?
It was turned off, but I think it was four years ago, five years ago, something like that. There would need to be some upgrades because there's not a pump there now. So there's a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of upgrades there, but not a million dollars. So that's part of the infrastructure costs that are on those previous slides. And I think it was like $705,000. If you read the book, I think the well upgrades were a quarter million of the $705. Yeah, I think it was.
Another question. So if we don't drill a new well, because I know we would actually have to take, you know, the flooring out, do you have any idea of what that would cost if you don't drill any more?
If we did not drill a new well at this location, then you would just be tapping into the existing municipal water system. And so it wouldn't be a million dollars. There's very little chlorine that's in our water, which is a good thing. Our water is very good and so there's not a lot. And sun naturally gets rid of the chlorine. And so, yeah, it breaks down the chlorine. And so even if chlorinated water were put into the lake, we would have to talk to the consultants about it. But in all likelihood, that would be done and there would be very little of any residual chlorine that would be left in the lake. The land purchase, somewhere from $1 to $2 million to purchase a property. Since this is a larger property, it's about 60 acres. There's a lot of additional land there where a lot of additional private housing and also commercial properties can be constructed. Looking at the preliminary designs that we received from the, from the developer, we're pretty confident to say that it's a larger subdivision could be built there. And so the TIF proceeds would easily be able to be $5.3 million or more. Then you would be able to, of course, resell the land back to the developers who would actually be selling off the lots. That would generate about $1.5 million. And then again, the fundraising from the committee of $350,000, that would leave the city's support of about $125,000. Then the last alternate site that we looked at was the Glover property off of Anna. A really picturesque site that's next to Sturgis Brewing Company. Again, looking at the infrastructure costs and the lake park, the new well and the land purchase price there, there is some additional property that would be around there for some additional housing as well as a little additional commercial property, but there's not as much as at the Richards property. So the TIF would generate a smaller amount, but it still would generate about $2 million. And then in turn, selling that land back to the developer there so that they would be able to develop the lots and then sell them to private individuals. That would be about a half million. The fundraising is about $3.5 million, or I'm sorry, $350,000. The committee got a little nervous when I said that. That would lead a required city's support of about $4.3 million. Again, there would probably be some grants that would be able to cover that, but definitely not the $5.3 million. Again, there would probably be some grants that would be able to cover that, but definitely not the 5.3 million.
North of Anna Street, is that also purpose, or is that all?
Yes, yes, that is. But looking...
There's actually more land.
There is. Looking at the cost of the land purchase, though, is kind of what starts driving that. So there is additional land that would be available that, again, would make more development possible. But you would also have to expend more funds to purchase the property.
So the land north of Anna Street, is that included in the land sale?
No, no.
Dan, would you please repeat the comments, because we're not hearing those.
Sorry. The question was, there's some additional land that's available north of Anna Street. And so is that part of the land sale costs as well as the TIF proceeds? It is not. And so that is something that if the council were interested in this site, we could do a further analysis to look at what the cost would be to purchase that additional property and what the additional TIF proceeds could be from that. But it really is not going to be enough to really substantively reduce that 5.3 million. I mean, it might be enough to reduce it another million or so. But it's going to be challenging to make up that 5 million dollar deficit. With that, I just wanted to thank everyone that's in attendance tonight for sharing your time. We know that your time is valuable, but this is an important project that's been brought up by more than a dozen residents who have spent a lot of time doing research on this and coming up with the best solution possible. And with that, unless there are any questions, presentation is done. And we'll bring up the screen so that the committee can come forth. Thank you.
So as the committee joins us up here on stage, kind of go through this so we can hear people better. If you do have something to ask or a statement to make, we do request that you come up to this microphone here so everybody could hear. Does council have any questions at this point from what Daniel presented? I guess in summary, there's, we have some, we have twofold question. One, does it make sense to build a lake? And if that's, the answer is yes, then two, does, where does it make the most sense? Allison, I'd let you say a few words if you so desire at this point in time.
Okay, so my name's Alison Creed, if you're not aware. I have, I guess, a couple different things to say. I have some questions also. I guess one of the first things I do want to mention is, yes, we did include the ball field information in this project. It wasn't what we anticipated including. But when we had the, I can't pronounce it right, the Charlotte, Charlotte, a couple people from baseball and softball had mentioned that they have to travel outside of Sturgis for their tournaments. They voiced, or they voiced a desire to have ball fields either upgraded or lighting. And within that conversation, we happened to realize that one of the designers, who was working on our project, actually was building the Spearfish ball fields. And they, and then the other designer had experience with the ball fields. So I advocated that we added that information to this project because they already had the information, they already had the knowledge. And I thought it was the right thing to do, so it could have been included within our budget of, you know, finding out this, what we were doing with the project. They could easily answer those questions. So it was in a good faith effort because no matter what we're working on, at least for me personally, I'm advocating for decrease traveling outside of Sturgis for parks, recreation, and for sports. So I know that there's been a little bit of pushback because we added that, but it was a good faith effort, and I am still happy that we included that information because it now started the discussion. And the, and baseball and softball, they can, they can take that information and they can do what with it, you know, they will. And if we include the ball field upgrades, then that's great. But that's why I advocated for it to be added. I do have a couple of questions about the locations that we are looking at. Specifically, the Richardson property, it looks like that might be the most favorable option, or it has some advantages that we might need to look at. I am curious if there's been a soil sample done on that property because with the fairgrounds, we have a very good idea of what that soil looks like. We have a very good idea of, obviously, the grading and whatnot. So I have some questions about that location. And the Glover property is nice, but I don't know that it's big enough. I don't know that that's a great secondary location. And I don't want to hog the mic, so I'll let some of my other committee members speak.
Well, I was going to answer one question. Through the process of the last few months, Mr. Richards did, we put together a Gibson study on the property out there, less than we expected. I think Daniel's number of 60 acres pretty much included the stuff that is not buildable at this exact time. Because I believe the property's 77 acres, 78 acres total, something like that, so. But that, so to answer your question, no, there hasn't been a true soil test done to that degree, but the Gibson has been drilled in multiple spots and made sure what's buildable and what isn't, the way it sits.
One phone.
Dave, come on up to the microphone there, please, sir.
Yeah, just what you want to do. I didn't know who I am, I guess, by now. But when Karen and Jenny talked at our quotas meeting, while I was kind of enthused, I hadn't been aware of this, that this little place, a splash pad, will be something that will help those kids in Sturgis. And during the summer, and I, with a two or three of us talked with the engineer after that one last meeting, and he indicated that you would be about 11 weeks using that. And so we got to talking, and Bob Berlato came up with the idea that we could offer something similar to that over, just across from Scott Morris Peterson's there. And what we figured out is that people on the interstate will see all these people down there playing. And so we have a little better visibility there for our splash pad. And the other thing is, there's a hill back of that, right next to it. And that's something we haven't talked about because you can, you don't hit any structures. That hill has got all kinds of different dips and slopes on it. So when you have the first snowfall, all you need is a four-wheel drive or some other thing or else. John there puts out a sideways side that you can put tread on. And that tread would get a vehicle to pull kids up onto there for sliding on their skateboards. And also, they can go up with about a half a dozen ropes hooked on behind. And when they get up or they want to stop, they just let loose and they back down. And besides that, there's several different slopes there at those people, and the older people can use too. So then you go over to the south side of that, on that hill, and you can put in a building with a rattle for stone, boards, skis, and cross-country. And you can close, take that vehicle up that hill. And as it gets up, the kids hang it on to a rope, those ropes are wherever you have them. They let loose anywhere they want to. And there's all kinds of tures that people can use to be a good place for beginners. And if they go on up on top, cross-country people can go out there and to the end of that property, into BLM land, and there's all kinds of distances, miles and miles there if they can go cross-country. So this place has opportunity in the summer, and the fall, and the winter.
Thanks, Dave. And I think through the discussions here is definitely quality of life and recreation. I think those are some key points as we consider this. This project certainly has a cost, but some of it's not monetary on how it's seen on repayments, so. Council have anything to add at this point? We'll keep opening the microphone up to public questions and discussion, if that's all right with everybody at this point. You got something, go ahead.
Yeah, my question was regarding the water source at the Richards property. You said that there was concerns expressed about utilizing the existing water source there from other citizens. From the perspective of the city, is that an issue or a concern?
Well, I no longer sit on MUB, but through the years of this discussion, MUB did have concerns with that as far as not necessarily overloading the system, but just it'd be, it'd be a large amount to take from the existing system. Of our seven wells, in the peak time of 1.9 million dollars, I don't think we'd even push, I don't want to speak for Rick or the Water Department or anything, but it would be well within capacity without pushing it to a degree of 90% even. I don't think, I would guess 50, 60% at the most at a peak time of our existing system.
So a simple, yes, it would be an issue, or?
That's a question I'd have to go from...
I know it's not as simple, but like trying to interpret what you were saying, like...
It would not, it would not influence the system to any major degree of problems. Daniel, you'll leave when the answers to the questions get done. But that, those have been discussions at Municipal Utility Board and other places that has come up, so. But as far as the percentage of our existing system, it would not strain it.
I have to say personally, I, obviously, I cannot speak for the entire board up here, but hearing about the Richards property is, I think, something that is exciting. It seems to have a little bit lower price point. And I think that it responds to a lot of the opposition when it comes to as far as the historic value of the fairgrounds. My only concern with the Richards property would be the access as far as like the biking and the walking and that accessibility, which the fairgrounds has. Has there been any discussion, or could there be discussion about adding something to make two-wheels and walking accessibility easier in the future?
So speaking of discussions and meetings underneath the I-90 corridor on exit 32, there's definitely a need and a discussion in some different projects that we've brought forward over the years to connect that better. With or without a lake being out at that property, I think the need still exists for bike path and everything over there. So whether it's on Benakka Canyon Road or directly underneath the interstate, which would be much trickier with DOT and everybody else. But there's routes and there's a need, and yes, those connectivities are, have been discussed and certainly need to be solved.
I just, whether or not the lake goes there or not, but I agree with that definitely because I know I do quite a bit of hiking up Benakka Canyon, and then a lot of times I go up on Graham's Land and Crossover. And I just see with more of the housing development, and you could, you know, go from Old Stone Road all the way up through Benakka Canyon, I mean, depending on how athletic you are, but...
Energetic.
Yeah, energetic, right. But it, you know, that Old Stone Road, you know, down through, you know, Vernon Heights, to make that connection from Vernon Heights down to, you know, pass Ford and stuff, if they could make that a little bit more visually appealing and safe, that'd be great.
Other discussions, public or council? Bob, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Bob Berlato, and I do represent the Richards in the land sale of this property. And I just want to point out a couple of things. You have, and we're talking about hiking and biking and so and so forth. This is not very far from, as Kevin knows, there's an entry, what, less than two blocks away, to the Forest Service with a parking lot that could, I think, probably be easily extended. At one time, there was actually some discussion of the trail, a possible trail that would come from the Fort Meade area, actually through the east end of the Richards property that would connect into the BLM, which would allow that to go, you know, completely to the south. With that said, the majority of this property that the Richards family owns is surrounded by BLM property. You have the Davenport family borders that, of course, a lot of BLM, and of course, you have borders actually the railroad on the north side, which is, some is visible, some isn't, but it's, it's, I don't anticipate that anybody would want to try and live with a railroad, so it's going to, it's going to be there. David mentioned earlier, there's just a huge, huge, huge opportunity for a lot of different events there. Whether it be sporting related, which would be awesome, industrial development, you know, there's the room for, you know, hotels, retail, service business is phenomenal. I think that in the long run, the, a water facility like, like what is being proposed would be a huge draw for our community. Alison, you mentioned, or somebody had mentioned, the prices, the pricing earlier. I got to tell you, the Richards family has actually reduced this considerably for the city. We are, I guess I'm going to say this, kind of on a holding pattern right now as far as getting it sold. They are, they are very, very open to working with the city, even as far as some matching funds for donations. They're, they're, I guess, whether I have it listed or any other real estate broker in Sturgis or in the area for that matter, if you look at the overall picture, the access, the availability, the availability to get there, the interstate, the interstate access and visibility is huge. So nothing you folks haven't already seen. I guess I would offer this if anyone or any of the group would like to go. I would be more than happy, in fact, with 60-degree temperatures this week would be a perfect time to do it. I would be more than happy to, and I know you're not making a decision tonight, but it might help make you a decision down the road, is let us give you a tour. And, you know, you pick the time and we'll be there and make it happen. We did a little figure, and I did a little figure on it. We're at 66 cents a square foot on that property. Interchange property, in fact, there's some for sale on the other side, and you mentioned the Glover property. I see it's a nice piece of property, no question about it. It's at, I think, 3.55, $3.55 a square foot. So with that said, we have, we, the Richards family, has made a real strong attempt to make this as plattable as we can for the city, you know, to own that property, whether it's, you know, whether it's for the water park or actually for future development. You know, Sturgis is going to continue to grow, we all know that. And, you know, this is probably an area where... And, you know, this is probably an area where it needs to be monitored. And the amount of time that I've had, had a listing, had a listing on the property, we've had inquiries from a number of different individuals. I gotta be honest with you, on the retail market, it's probably going to bring eventually more than what we're asking now. I, I can't predict the future, but the way things are going, I think this would be a superb purchase for the city and especially with the terms that the Richards family is willing to offer. So like I say, if, if anybody would like to, would like to meet out there this week, my only day that I'm tied up during the, during the day for sure is on Wednesday, but I'm free to go tomorrow, Thursday, Friday. If someone wants to select a time, I'd be more than happy to give you the tour and let you see what, what it all does include. I gotta tell you, once you get up on that ridge, it's awesome. There, there's views and sights up there that, kind of unimaginable. I mean, unless you're there to actually see it, it's pretty, it's pretty cool. And I mean, whether you're talking residential or, you know, additional sporting events, you know, additional. Of course, we'd have to have some snow David before we get any, you know, too much cross-country skiing or anything on that line, but huge amount of potential there. Thank you.
Thanks Bob.
So I think that's a great option. I have to confess, the gate was down one time, maybe during the rally, kind of broke a little bit. Well, I can afford trespassing, but I would love it if we could go and look at that property and if we could even, you know, stream it. So that way, it, you know, sometimes a video does so much more for showcasing a location versus just pictures. I, I work, but I could work on, I could come out there on Saturday and that way we could maybe stream it and we could put it on our Facebook page too.
If you don't mind, and Saturday would be fine for me, but, you know, if Thurs, I, I would be more than happy to set a time even on like on Thursday, and I'm thinking weather-wise more than anything. The weather's supposed to kind of change for the weekend, they're talking still mid 50s on Thursday. I'll just throw this out there, anybody would want to meet me there at 10 o'clock in the morning, I'd be happy to show them.
Great. Awesome. And I think with that creek, I am kind of wondering. With that creek that comes through that Richardson property, just because I've spent so much time talking with the landscape engineer and stuff, I'd be really excited to see what they would, you know, come up with as far as, you know, if we, if we do the lake and it's supposed to be a natural, if we utilize that natural stream and build that out and make that even a centerpiece, a focal, I think that'd look nice.
Kind of a nice bottom green area there that honestly, you know, with a little work could be a real park-type, you know, scenario, you know, along with it. But like I say, just let me know if somebody wants to, you know, run with that. Like I say, Thursday morning would be great for me, so just let me know.
This is a real exciting presentation. I appreciate all the work that the committee's put into this. Could be a real unique draw for our community. Looks like we've got plenty of options and questions to be answered as, as we work through this, you know, and connected, connected pieces. You know, the school looking at some property for expansion for their elementary school, I mean, that's good community building exercises. You know, the options that we have available potentially at whether the Richards property or some of these other locations. You know, one of the items, and it's, I mean, it's not really the time to bring it up, but you know, we do have water supply out of the city dams and a main that comes down that maybe it can augment the, the water source there. And, you know, I don't know what kind of water that can supply, but it was our water supply up until, you know, like 1980.
Tom, looks like you're coming up. There's someone in the projector booth, could you turn off the projector please? It's a little bit bright down here.
My name is Tom Termas. I've lived in Sturgis for 48 years, 49. There's somebody named Termas been living in Northern Black Hills for over 100 years. I have nothing to gain or to lose by this project personally. The meeting thus far has changed me from opposition to ambivalence. And so that's, that's, I guess, a good thing. Would like to thank the committee. I, I have great respect for all the work you've put in and I can't even tell you how much I admire the council. I know how hard you guys work and the mayor and. Well, my primary concern is that the water park would be used for, what do we say, 11 weeks? And I see that as a pretty big investment for something that's going to be used for that shorter period of time. I guess what I think is my primary concern always has been families. And that is, I mean, I want to see our town grow and everything, but I want to provide families. And how can we help families? And an important part of family is recreational activities for families. So I'm thinking, and this is just crazy, but I just thought, well, how about a field house? You could do indoor soccer, you could do indoor, you could have archery, you could do all kinds of things inside this building all year long. Most of my concerns about filtration and, you know, birds and everything, you've addressed. That's been researched and I'm happy with that. But I am concerned about the short time of utilization. As far as the property goes, I think that that Richards property might be a pretty cool deal. But I just, I just really have trouble with this and so I'm ambivalent. And again, thank you to the committee and to the council.
Thanks Tom. Anybody else have public questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
My name's Carrie Applegate and I've been a resident of Sturgis majority of my life. And I think this is a great time for City of Sturgis to do something for the citizens of Sturgis. And a lot of the negative comments on Facebook were the historical issue or it's only 11 weeks out of the year. And if we have the ability to get a property that can do summer, winter, fall, spring, all kinds of activities with the potential for possibly a field house if there's extra land, attaching to trails that are so well-built, potentially having a bike path through Benakka Drive to get out to it so the kids have access, plus it's on the interstate to have visibility, what more could this city want? And I think this is just a great opportunity for this council to say yes to the kids and the citizens of Sturgis.
Thank you. Any other comments? How about any more discussion from council at this point?
Okay, good evening. I wanted to just say thank you so much for you all coming out tonight and spending your evening here with us. And of course, thank you to the committee for all of your time. I know that this has been ongoing the last year or so and so for you all to step forward and, and put in your, your time and your effort, I want to just commend you for working to build a better community for us. So when I think about this project for me, I think I've made mention a few times that I look at this as a legacy project for our town. We supported this concept from the beginning. It's unique, it's exciting, and I think that just to echo what has been said, it, it really would be such a great opportunity for our town to have this. But the counterbalance to that has always been the financial, that it needed to pencil out. One of the things that I look at, being a member of the city council, is always the bottom line and, and what does the financials look like? My responsibility is to try to have the maximum impact to recreation and quality of life for our town with minimum, minimal financial costs. So I'm just going to say that my personal opinion right now is for the Richards property, that is where I'm inclined to, to say that I, I think this is where this project should go. The potential that we have with those 66 acres out there to include not only the lake, but commercial housing, which we know is just one of, one of our biggest needs here in town. To have that all be out there with easy access to the interstate. I just think that for me, that is what is looking to be our best bet for this project. So anyway, thank you. Thank you for, for the time.
Mr. Brook, you look like you're coming up.
Yeah, good evening council and committee members. I, I guess I just, this is Mark Brook and I'm a business owner downtown. I have a restaurant downtown and I'm also a part of the Downtown Foundation, which if I'm not here on their behalf tonight, I just wanted to say a few things that at least in some, some discussions by our board and just discussions with people in general. I, I guess when I first heard about the, the project, what was first brought to me was in the early stages when we were all talking about, or the committee was talking about building something similar to what Spearfish has. And really didn't, I, that really brought me pause because I feel like we're just too close to Spearfish to build something similar to that. And then of course, the cost of that seemed to be pretty extreme. When I heard about Lakeside Park, I thought, wow, this is, this is super. This is at a lower cost, it's unique, and I think it's so unique that we're talking about something that will actually bring people from Spearfish and Rapid City and, and from the rural areas especially, for something unique like that. And, and for events and birthday parties, you know, the sort, that sort of stuff. Which of course, just helps our, helps our, the rest of our businesses in town, especially if you're, if you've got something like that that's unique, you know, from pulling people from a distance. Personally, I've always felt like the Fairground property was the proper place for this. Only from the standpoint of, you know, it's something close, you know, and I think a lot of parents would feel comfortable sending their kids over there and on a bicycle from the majority of, of the, for the city. I think there's going to be a little more pause when it comes to sending them, you know, across the freeway and railroad tracks and so on. And not, that isn't to say that some of those things can't be fixed to make it more comfortable for, for parents to do that. But I will admit, I didn't know so much about the Richards property until, you know, obviously tonight. But I just want to, I just want to say that I think this is something that, that the council should go for. This is really unique and I think with whether, whether it's a version at the fairgrounds or whether it's the Richards property where you've got the chance to use some TIF money and Daniel brought it up about, you know, the state has some money that I think this would qualify for. I think the timing couldn't be better to go for it on something like this. Thank you for the committee working so hard on this because I know it's gone on for a long time and at times it certainly feels like you're not, you know, you don't have the support. I wish we were full tonight. This, this is the kind of thing that, you know, gets people like me excited and I wish we could get more people excited. Now, maybe they're all out there listening, so that's great too. But I think we should go for it tonight. I really was waiting to hear some, somebody, you know, saying anything against it tonight and, you know, in a way I guess I'm happy we're to, I don't know where those folks are at, I guess. Thanks everybody.
Thanks Mark. Yeah, thanks a lot Mark. I have to echo the same thoughts, you know, not really looking at the Richardson, Richards property. Earlier, I thought due to access that that would just be not as doable as, as it looks like we could make it, especially if there's other money available to help with some things. And to look at the, one of the things we tried to do as a committee was to keep our project economically sustainable too. With the first numbers that we were looking at in, in estimates, we were trying to make it so that we could get through this without hardly any cost to the community. Well, of course, after real estimates come through and we look at the real numbers, you know, this, our original idea on Ballpark Road doesn't look anywhere near as good as the, the one at the Richards property is. So I, you know, I, I think mostly the committee's nodding in support of that and I haven't asked all of them because we haven't met over this, but I could say that it really does look like a very interesting idea out there.
I, I don't know if you can hear me or not. I have also been a proponent of the Richards property, but I'd like to make a pitch for the fairgrounds before it gets away. We're going to have something fantastic if we have Adventureland, but we could have something even, even equally as attractive is some brand-new soccer fields, new baseball fields and a field house. The Richards family field house at the fairgrounds to round out our community. Now we've got everything in one place and they'll find plenty of places to build homes. We don't need to give wrecked property to housing. That's all I got to say.
Thanks Mike. David, go ahead sir.
I might, I might add another couple of things. I've been trying to talk with people wherever I could get their attention. We don't have a hotel in the, in the hills except Rapid that has a high building with under, under the building garage. Now right across from Scott Motors, Motor Ford Company, that road there is way above the lower area and there's room for one or two or more buildings in there where you could put under garage so people could go in there during the winter and then wouldn't have to park their cars outside. And so the city, if they owned it, might be able to talk somebody into putting it out in a high-rise building. And you could have underground rods there, which makes Sturgis a hub because when you go out in all directions, Valve Moose, Spearfish, Deadwood, and you can go up that, that and all about the same distance. So those people, when they stay there, can, on vacation, can go for that hotel anywhere with a same amount of distance and yet they can go down and play either in the pond or else ski or do something like that right, right before they can see it.
Thanks David. I'd just like to reiterate what Mike was saying and I guess clarify a little bit, even give my opinion on it, but I think the future use of the fairgrounds, whether it be in the near years or far years, would have to do with the plan, but I think it makes sense to have the school expand up there, the baseball fields expand up there, the softball fields expand up there, the soccer fields expand up there and use that 20-some acres of land we have in the middle of town to continue the growth that's already around it. So I agree with you 100% for Sean. Any other discussion?
I, I just want to add real quick.
Yep, go ahead, Dean.
I am, I just want to make clear, so I'm not misquoted, I am for this. A lot of, a lot of families, a lot of people that I know within the community have young kids that would love this thing. I almost feel a little bit like we're setting ourselves up to continue to be reaching for something else. We're continuing to move the target for ourselves. I mean, even we went from a splash pad to where we currently are, to now talking about field houses and other stuff adding on. I think it would be a good idea to bring our focus in to the one project and then add on at some point in time. But continuing to move the target just continues to push this out. And some of those families that I know, their kids will be grown by the time this is done. So I think it, I think it would be important for the community, not necessarily quit reaching because it is good to reach and to want something good for the community, which I think this is, but we've got to make it realistic and economical.
Go ahead, Erin. And I think just to clarify too, Dean, certainly two separate issues, but if, if the fairgrounds isn't used, it could be used for something else for a future discussion, for sure. With current plans already going on up there, I mean, there's development going on up there already, so. Go ahead, Erin.
Basically, I was just going to follow what you just said is that the way I've been looking at this and as we listen to the people in the community and the committee and having this discussion over the last couple of months, I do think the near target is more the lake, the things that the committee's been focused in on. What I think is exciting about tonight though is that we really do kind of picture ourselves long-term. You know, it's more of a recreational town, also not just, we're not a rally town, we're a events town, we're a recreational town. And so the more space that we can use, you know, for those recreations. Obviously, I know we have a need for ball fields, soccer fields in town. So I would say, Dean, I do think we're looking at the near target on the lakeside of it, but we still have at least space. And as means become available, resources become available, we can continue to develop the rest of it. Yeah, I think it's going to take a while, I think we need to be patient. But I do think, you know, it kind of sets the conditions for us to achieve some of the things we've been talking about from a vision for our community.
I'm very impressed with everything tonight and I've been impressed with the aquatics committee all along. And thank you once again for all your work on this. And I really like what, what Dave Richards has had to say about his property. And I think this would be probably a really positive move for us. And I guess my question now is, and I think probably everybody's kind of wondering this, what's our next course of action? So we've had this discussion and so then what happens next?
Well, procedurally, Councilor Martinson, on the agenda, there is discussion and recommendations that could come out of this if council chose to have those actions. So I guess no final, no final vote or anything on purchase of lands or anything like that, but definitely recommendations is possible as the way the agenda is written. So go ahead, Erin.
You know, honestly, from an infrastructure perspective, you know, I think this is something we need to take a look at too. I mean, we got all the numbers out there, we need to sit down and, you know, with Daniel go through the finances again. Because right now, basically, we've just been exposed to numbers. I wouldn't mind kind of digging into the math a little bit and how we got to the numbers. So I do think there's some, you know, work to do there. You know, obviously, I feel pretty confident on those numbers, we've always been pretty good at that. But actually take a look at it, get Rick Bush involved, get his insights on some of the water pieces of it. And just make sure that we go into this, you know, understanding what the potential problems are and that we have things to mitigate it.
I just would like, and this, I'm just speaking as a citizen, not as a committee member or anything. But one of the things that I would like to see from the council and from the city is, you know, formulate a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, even a fifteen-year plan because I really think that Sturgis is a middle of metamorphosis. Part of that is pandemic relation, you know, related. Part of it is expanding our recreation, but, you know, when we're talking about ball fields or improvements on the soccer fields, you know, where in that timeline could we fit any of those maybe potential projects? And I think also from my perspective, from a person who's been working on this deal and also fundraising, like it takes a lot of effort and a lot of planning to get those fundraising events. And it's also going to take years to gain that money. So I think if, if the council and, and people start talking about, well, I would like to see the ball fields improved or, or a complex or whatnot, can we start those discussions and then, and realize like it might be ten years before we have that, but we can start that planning and those discussions now? That's just, that's my two cents that I would just like to see.
I just wanted to reiterate that I think that's super important to have a target here. This committee was put together and we decided that the lake idea is what we wanted to go with. We are not knowledgeable in the softball, soccer, baseball complex. I'm not, and I'm a big proponent. My kids grew up here and I love this town, but that's not what we've spent our time and energies on. The idea that you would like to target this, I would like to see something I can jump into and swim in, in the next year and a half. I don't want this to be a five-year plan, I don't want this to be a ten-year plan. We have put a year and a half into this, this committee plus a few more. And we have turned it over right before Christmas to the council to move forward. Richards property, tonight's the first night I've heard of it. I think it's valuable to take a look, I think that's probably falls into your description. Thank you, gentlemen. But I want to move forward. And it's great to have a five-year plan and you should, and you should have a ten-year plan and we should have that. But I teach kids every day and they say they have nowhere to go. And I want them to be able to either take the bike path underneath the interstate and jump in the water or I want them to go to the fairgrounds and jump in the water. And as an educator, I would love for that to be at the fairgrounds so we have access with our, with our elementary schools, but that's, that's a compromise. That's a compromise and that's okay, but that's for you to figure out. But I am on board one hundred and ten percent with the targeted idea of getting this accomplished as soon as possible.
I agree. Just as a committee, we need to know what our step is for fundraising. Can we now, or when can we start to get those pledges or those donations move forward? So as soon as we can do that and have the approval, we can move forward. But until then, we kind of can't really go out there and start asking. So that's what, we just can move forward and get, if we're going to do it, we need to know when we can start.
Well, I think the way the agenda is written, that there can be recommendations out of this meeting from city council to basically say we're building a lake and where at we can work on or consider, you know, further discussions on that. But I think the process that's in front of us, the main question we have to answer is, are we going to build a lake with the numbers that were provided? And I think if council chooses to have action on those recommendations, we can, you can know tonight.
You know, also just that managing expectations, you know, I'd agree that I do, looking at the lake, I think that's, it seems really feasible. I don't know what that timeline is in terms of, you know, what the real time in terms of the finance, the buying the property, setting things up and all that kind of stuff. Obviously, I think we'd want to do as quickly as we possibly can. But also, our community has other challenges too. I mean, as we continue to grow and we want to grow responsibly, our infrastructure right now, we're not at capacity, but we're getting close to capacity on certain things. And to be able to fix those particular utilities or things that we need to be able to continue to grow, you know, that's going to take resources also. So I did, you know, at some point, we have, it's a balancing ball a little bit and looking at all the resources we have, what are all the priorities out that we have? And then kind of working through that and trying to make good choices now that kind of sets our community up in the future. Obviously, you know, Allison, that's a great idea in terms, I mean, we have some plans out there. It's been a long time since we put those plans together. The environment has changed greatly. So I know we've had some discussions, at least with individuals, with the councilors in terms of, you know, maybe having a new kind of master plan in a sense, whereas we want to go. And part of having that master plan is having a shared vision with everybody in our community and what we want, what are we, what we want to be. But again, what it comes down to it, we are a smaller community, we have limited amount of resources. And ultimately, we got to prioritize how we're going to take care of those things so we can set things up in the future. But again, it looks, right now, looking at the numbers, it looks real good on the lake, on what we're going to do there. Just can't commit to timelines.
Well, and I think too, was it two meetings ago when the two gentlemen came to talk to us about a motocross area? And we mentioned, or I, I had mentioned that we really, I think, do need to have a conversation and develop something similar to the comprehensive plan that deals with recreation and quality of life. And this certainly, this project falls under that. I think that this would be the lead project. I, you know, we talked about the fairgrounds this evening, but that isn't really why we're here. I think that that is a project that, or, you know, that's something that definitely can be considered, but the lake is our focus this evening, it's been the focus for the last fourteen months. And again, I think if, if we were to have the conversation on recreation, quality of life, and it's something similar to a comprehensive plan, that's, that's what we need to do in this project is at the forefront of that.
I just would like to say one final thing before you guys go to your recommendations or whatnot. Just to, to really reiterate the time sensitivity of this. I know that there are other priorities and other things that the city needs to keep in mind, but when you're thinking about the amount of time already put into this and the potential for funds from the governor with those grants, I think keeping that in mind as you guys are making those recommendations and the potential money that can come from that to help with this project, to alleviate some of the financial burden from the city, just something to think about as you guys move into making your recommendations here now.
Tom, you coming back up? Just because nobody else is coming.
You're doing a wonderful job of convincing me, thank you for your work. If we go to the Richards property, all the design work that's been done on the fairgrounds, there's been a lot of money spent on that, right? Is that lost or what's the deal?
So before they, before the developers and the designers even started this process, the question was asked multiple times to make sure that it could be picked up on any piece of land and moved to another. It's, it's not specific to the fairgrounds, albeit they did use that as their design, but within percentage points, yes, it can be moved to anything else. So to answer your question, no, it was not money wasted, it was, it can be utilized on other properties.
Mark, I'd just like to reiterate and for the committee and for the councilors and, you know, city management and so on and so forth, I would, I would sure invite, you know, evidently, the Richards property is a little bit of a surprise to some people. And I would encourage anyone that wants to come out on Thursday morning, if that's what we proceed to do, public, anybody, you know, the press, whoever wants to come, I'm, I'm sure wide open for that. Just, you know, if you've got, my vehicle holds five people. So bring a four-wheel drive or a SUV or something on that line because it's, it isn't pavement smooth by any means. But I think you'll enjoy the trip, I think you'll see probably way more of the future potential than what we're just talking about here tonight.
Thursday, ten AM.
Thursday, ten AM, does that work for you, Mark?
Well, it works for a lot of people. I bet they do.
At the gate?
I would say we meet at the gate, right at the, right at the Richards property. That's, that's, it's right across the road from Scott Peterson Motors. Can't miss my sign. It'll, we'll just meet right there, there's a drive-through gate. And again, whoever, whoever wants to come is, is, I'll take as much time as it needs. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Hello, my name is Donna Craven, I'm a resident here of Sturgis. I have not been a lifelong resident, can you hear me okay? I have not been a lifelong resident like a lot of people here. And this is my first meeting that I've come to. And I really was opposed to this before I came. And after listening to all the different options and the things that's being done, and yes, Sturgis does need things for kids to do, but they also need things like other people were saying, more than just eleven weeks. And the property that this gentleman here is representing is a very good option. One thing that no one has mentioned in the other areas, like at the fairgrounds or on Anna Street, is traffic. And there is limited, I just feel like there'd be traffic jams around the fairgrounds. And Anna Street is where my veterinarian is. So I know there's a lot of traffic that comes up and down that street and that would really be a problem, I believe, for that area. I think there should be other studies done. Whereas the visibility out there on the Richards property, the location of it and the option to have winter activities to make more money off of the property, I think is the best decision. And not only would the children be able to use it, but so would the adults and the middle in between and older people like me. So there's so much, and yes, to start with the lake is what is needed and to make plans for the rest of it, I think is the very best option. And I just wanted to say that, and I'm so glad I came tonight.
Thanks, Donna, thanks for coming. So I think we should kind of lay out a roadmap here. I, I think that it makes sense for the aquatics committee to meet again prior to that. I think if council feels as pertinent, I think we could make a recommendation of, or not a recommendation, whatever is desired, but to have the question on the lake at hand and actually have action on either way if council decides. I think if taken any further than that, we would rather in the near future have you guys meet again and bring forward your recommendation on the location of the three that you think is best at this point. And hopefully, we can get that done quickly and continue to work at council level of actions moving forward to keep this project and get people in the, in the water. Does that make sense for aquatics committee, is that something you guys can meet pretty quickly on? I think we're looking for a recommendation without a doubt. I think one hundred percent it's on the nine council members that have to decide where the location is best. I think that's entirely on us, but I think that, I, I think it's a step in the process that would make sense for what we've already done, unless you guys are ready to do it now.
I personally could vote, but I think, I don't know. I don't know if everybody else wants to, but I, I think just the two main questions that we have were the gypsum and the water, so I don't know. And, and the location as far as if we would choose the Richards property, I just want to make sure that the city, you know, the idea of creating that bike path or whatever, we just really have to make sure that that's part of the project too. So I don't know if we can wrap it from the, the middle school and connect it there, I don't know, but I don't know.
Well, and I, you know, just to say that I concur with the mayor in that I would really like to, you know, hear from you all. Something similar to what other committees for the city do, planning and zoning, where they come to the council with, with a recommendation. I think that that would be, you know, a proper first step.
Next, how about next step, not fir, not first step? We've been on a voyage already. So does council have any further discussion or questions? As far as the question on shall we build a lake or not with what's been presented through the process and put on paper tonight? And if no one's ready to make that commitment, I think that's fine also. But it is available for recommendations from this point forward for action from council.
We did receive a lot of information tonight, you know, to consider, to digest, you know, a little bit of time to think about things. And also just kind of double check on some stuff. And I'm not necessarily, not speaking for everybody, but in terms of making your recommendations or decisions tonight, you know, to me, it's more informational. I've learned a lot, you know, read through the documents and sit down with the committee before and the folks that developed it, but there's been a lot of great dialogue tonight. tonight, and having Mr. Richards here to discuss his project or his opportunity for us, you know, maybe just kinda sit back and think about that over the next meeting or so, maybe less, we can, you know, maybe start making a, a decision in terms of what's the next step then.
And I think part of that recommendation could set out a roadmap on a timeframe, say, a meeting in February or something, we take this step, or whatever we wanna do, I just wanna make sure we understand that. We can move the ball forward to some degree if we so desire, 'cause I think there's, at least the sentiment in this room dictates.
So, we can, so I can make a motion that we ask the aquatics committee for a recommendation, maybe for the first meeting in February? Would that be enough time for you all?
Yes.
Okay, so, should we, so I'll start with them. Okay, I would like to move, to recommend the, which is February seventh.
So, first by Becca.
If I could clarify, Becca, before we get away from you, what does your, what does your motion include? A roadmap for the purchase of or discussion for building the property? Where, what's your motion, what's the action logic?
Okay, the recommendation to include, oh my goodness, I would say the purchase recommendation, a business plan, and, well, something similar, I'm sorry.
Let me speak for you, Becca, I think the recommendation from, from, from the aquatics committee solely on location, is that what you guys are feeling? That's the way I feel that this discussion has gone, is the recommendation brought forward by the aquatics commi, committee would be to recommend the council that X location would be the best for the lake.
And the size.
And I think the size of the lake through the process has been consistent at about three acres through the whole process, so.
And the location now?
So, we have a first by Becca to recommend the first meeting in February, the aquatics committee bringing forward their recommendation on location of a proposed lake.
I'll second that.
We got a second by Mike. Any further council discussion on said motion? About further public discussion? None being heard? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no? That motion carries unanimously?
Absolutely.
In February. This has been a project that's been ongoing for quite some time over the months, but...